Okay, 10 o'clock, so I'll go ahead and follow this meeting to order. This is a regular Commissioners' Court meeting for County of Starr. I'd like to welcome everyone and thank you all for being here. Everyone, please stand.
The decision to the title, the United States of America, and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
There's none, Your Honor?
Let's move on to the paperwork.
Want you to do that, huh?
Yeah.
Check it.
Second, the paperwork minutes. Oliver, please.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries next item is the vendors list.
It's an ordinance.
What's your question, Your Honor?
Second, for a full discussion. Oliver, please.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries next item is planes.
Yes, if any of you sent us in trouble. I don't know what you're checking out.
Move the second for a full discussion. Oliver, please.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Before we start with our reports, if there's anyone from out of town who's coming for the court. We'll now move, we'll go down on our agenda. First item is gas. What's on your gas?
Judge, can we do a proclamation for the domestic violence?
Yeah, of course. We're working out. On page eight. Okay, we'll be okay with the fourth, I'm going to come to number eight. And this is an action item, it's just a full approval proclamation. Claiming October as domestic violence charges.
Good morning, Judge and our Starr County Commissioners. On behalf of our Starr County Attorney Renee Montalvo and our Victims of Domestic Violence Program led by Lucy Renteria, our program coordinator, we're respectfully asking the court to approve the proclamation that is in your packets. We're asking you to proclaim the month of October 2023 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and we're inviting each of you to join us at our vigil, which will be tomorrow night at the Roma ISD Performing Arts Center. We'll begin at six with refreshments and music, and we'll have a short program beginning at seven. Thank you very much. We ask you to support this proclamation.
Move the second for a full discussion. Oliver, please.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries.
Thank you.
We'll provide your reports, yes, for you.
Judge and Commissioners, you should have the report before you. And you see, this is our August report, our September, we still haven't closed it out. They're working on that. We still need, you know, to get some, some numbers. But the, last month, you didn't get the August one, so I'm reporting the August. And we had a revenue of seventy-four thousand five hundred and thirty-nine seventy cents. The expenses were forty-eight thousand seven seventy-nine with thirty-five cents. So, month of August, we had a total of twenty-five thousand seven sixty in the plus. Any questions for Gas Department?
The transfer station?
Yes. You have the report before you. And you see the revenues for September and also the expenses. And it shows we have a deficit of one hundred and sixteen thousand and thirty-seven. We've already paid most of this with the loan that you all approved last month, it doesn't show. So in reality, we have about eighty-four thousand and some in our account, not a deficit. But like I said, you all approved a loan last Commissioners' Court. Any questions?
Yeah, hopefully with the justice, we did the budget for the Commissioners. That should work out.
Yes, and that, that will help, Judge. Thank you all.
Let me ask you something. So you're, how often are we going to be paying, or are they going to send a bill to the Commissioner?
Uh, the auditor said she'd get together with me on that.
We need to have, we get a, we get a, an invoice, not an invoice or a, or a ticket, of how much we, we deliver out there and how much is the cost. So, we know what, you know, how much, you have there fifteen dollars a ton so many times we delivered there. So after a month or so, then we check the list of how many tons we had, we took over there, and then sign a P.O., a sign a P.O.
I don't know how the auditor wants to do it.
And we need to deal with the auditor, but I think the way it was structured, Commissioner, is that regardless of how much you take, it's going to be fifty thousand. I mean, some will take more, some will take less, but we, we know that it runs around a hundred thousand in the red, which is what it shows.
Yes, that's what she told me. Let these not here.
Something else. So how far, if, if we don't, if any commissioner just say takes only twenty thousand dollars of trash up there? And they say, so actually, what we're trying to do, and what you're not just telling, that we, those fifty thousand dollars we're going to pay regardless to balance out. But if that's the deficit that we're having, it's not because of our retention.
Most of it is, Commissioner, excuse me, but let me, let me tell you. We've had so many breakdowns the past three years, that it is, it, it is so much. The machines, we've, we've spent, I can tell you, we've spent over a hundred thousand in just fixing the machines. And that is very costly.
Yeah, I understand that, Becky.
And you have to.
I understand that, but here, what they told us is because when we go deliver to the, to the transportation system, but is that so?
That, that's what we, we think it is.
But no, it's not, sir. Is that the way it is?
Well, and, and if it's not, then we need to reduce that fifty thousand from your budget and add it to the.
To the transfer station for all the expenses.
For maintenance, yeah. This was just a quick fix, because it came up at the very end, that we needed about a hundred thousand, and, and one of the things that was mentioned was that the Commissioner, we're taking trash and garbage or whatever, and we're not being built, so I thought the easy thing would be give fifty thousand each.
That's what I say, that's, that's fine, but like I said, we need to know, you know, they say, if I, if I take thirty-five thousand of, of.
And, and we can do that for the next budget, you know, we can come up with a number. Let's say you take twenty thousand, Commissioner Fuentes takes a hundred thousand, or we'll, we'll build you twenty, and we'll build him a hundred, or whatever, you know, to make it more accurate. But right now, what we needed was just a band-aid, I guess.
Okay. Well, I was just wondering, you know, how often, how often are we going to get built each, each precinct?
I, I would say maybe.
Every three months?
Every three months, every.
Okay, well, I can do that.
No, I want to do my question, Judge. We, we didn't have that line item in the past, right? It's a, it's a new line item. Automatically, at the beginning, those fifty thousand are transferred to the.
I don't think it's, I don't.
Or is it going to be like?
We can follow whatever the auditor's recommendation is, whether it be monthly, three months, every six months, whatever. But at the end of the year, it all will be transferred to a different transfer station.
All of the machines that we have at the transfer station?
I'm sorry?
How old are the machines?
Uh, older than the transfer station. Let me tell you why. We had two machines, one burned down completely when we had that fire. And then we bought another one that was used, and I'm telling you, it's probably old, older than the transfer station. So the machines are very old, and they require maintenance all the time. Those machines do not stop.
Yeah, we, we still haven't finished the lawsuit, right?
Right. It's still pending.
If you're wasting that much money in maintenance, it'd probably be cheaper to buy a new one.
Yes, we've spent a lot of money.
I, I think that, I may, I'm, I'm wrong, I think as you mentioned, at the end, every three months, you check your, what have you delivered? And if the amount of dollars is in that ticket, and get a P.O. and then send it to, to the transfer station.
We could do that, and then at the end, whatever's remaining, I'll, I'll.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Tax collector?
Good morning. My report is in front of you, if you can follow me, please. Our total delinquent collection just for Starr County were two hundred and seventy-two thousand fifty-six with fifty-one cents. The total collections, delinquents in same time last year were two hundred and thirty-four thousand eight hundred and eighty-one with fifty-nine cents. There was a total delinquent collection of thirty-seven thousand one hundred and seventy-four with ninety-two cents more than last year. Since 2022, taxes became delinquent as of July the first, projected collection, collections remaining are ninety-two, remained at ninety-two percent. Projected collections that became delinquent on July the first were one million four hundred and twenty-four thousand five hundred and twelve with seventeen cents. We have collected a hundred and three percent of the projected delinquent collections. We surpassed the projected collections by seventy-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy. Collections made through the American Rescue Plan were forty-two, forty thousand five hundred and thirty-two with three cents. The motor vehicle department were seventy thousand six hundred and seventeen with sixty-nine cents. That concludes my report.
Does that mean us on the delinquent collections, so you collected a hundred and three percent, does that include the rescue plan collections that were delinquent?
Yes, because most of the taxes that are collected through the American Rescue Plan are delinquent.
Okay, so if we were to take that out, what percentage do we have to?
I would need to check that. I can give you that information later.
And how much, how much is the rescue plan that people are collecting?
Uh, the American Rescue Plan were forty, forty thousand five hundred and thirty-two with three cents.
Forty thousand, and the total delinquent collection was?
Uh, our total delinquent.
Including the, including the American Rescue Plan.
Our total delinquent is, uh, let me see. One million four hundred and twenty-four thousand?
That's all right.
Okay, if you have any more questions, I'll answer to you in the office, okay? Thank you.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners.
Good morning.
Our summary reports in front of you, I'm going to highlight just a couple of them. Our records management received five thousand seven fifty-eight. For copies, we got one thousand three eighty-seven eighty collected. Records archive was five thousand five hundred and seventy. Uh, our total due to the general fund from County Clerk's Office was fifteen thousand three seventy-six seventy, for a total of twenty-nine thousand nine ninety-seven eighty. Been pretty consistent between twenty-nine, thirty-two, and thirty-five thousand dollars a, a month. Our project is done, Judge and Commissioners, we have submitted it to Ms. Rose Benavides for final payment, and we should have it, it's up and running. We're going to give Ms. Fuentes to put the website on there and with I.T. so that we can have it all for the public. And it'll be everything from the beginning of Starr County's time, eighteen seventy-six, whatever it is, to current, everything will be online. Any questions? Thank you.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. This is a report for September twenty twenty-three. USA submissions at fifteen hundred. Marshal Transport Services, six thousand three eighty-two. Medical services for the marshals, one thou, one thousand four thirty-three. Marshal Services for housing inmates, one hun, one hundred fifty-three thousand six hundred and seventy. Hidalgo County Sheriff's Office, two hundred and four thousand one sixty-six, for a total revenue, three hundred and sixty-seven thousand one hundred and fifty-one dollars. Uh, account for October, the second, was ninety, ninety-seven federal inmates, a hundred and eight Hidalgo, eighty-two Starr County inmates, for a total housing of two eighty-seven. The monthly average was ninety-three federal inmates and a hundred and ten Hidalgo inmates. The revenue difference between twenty, September twenty twenty-two to the September twenty twenty-three is an additional one thousand three hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And the, we finish the year with four million, four million four hundred and eighty-four thousand with forty-eight dollars, which is additional seven hundred and seventy-six thousand two hundred and forty-two dollars more than last year. That puts us at a hundred and twelve percent. Uh, and that's my report, Your Honor.
So both seventy, thirty, is equal, over the, what was it to make it?
Correct.
No.
No, 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 sir. No, it was over, is, uh, four hundred and forty-eight thousand.
Over what?
The seven hundred's what, was connected over last year's.
Uh, over last year.
Yeah, over projected is about four hundred.
Four hundred and eighty-four?
Correct.
Okay. And then we're over.
Yeah, that's very good.
Take care of the.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. This is a report for September twenty twenty-three. The total revenue from traffic is two hundred and twenty-five thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars. And we show an increase of twenty thousand eight hundred and thirty for the month of September twenty twenty-three compared to the month of September twenty twenty-two. And we also show an increase of nine thousand five hundred and thirteen dollars with fifty cents on collections for the month of September twenty twenty-three compared to the month of August twenty twenty-three. And we have a currency exchange of ninety dollars and seventy-three cents. And the grand total collection for that, uh, September twenty twenty-three is two hundred and twenty-five thousand six hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy-three cents. And on your second page of the report, I have the totals for the fiscal year for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Uh, the comparison for last year, the year before last, is two million two hundred and seventy-six thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars. And for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, we have a, uh, two million, uh, five hundred and fifty-five thousand four hundred and three dollars, which is an increase of two hundred and seventy-nine thousand one hundred and seventy-eight dollars for this last year. And on other collections, it's supposed to be twenty twenty-two, twenty thirty-three, and we have an excess of a thousand six hundred and twenty-nine dollars and fifty cents, that's for the whole year. And the grand total for this past year is two million five hundred and fifty-seven thousand zero thirty-two dollars with fifty cents.
The bridge did really well.
Mm-hmm, yes.
I, I don't know how much over the projected, you gave in with, but we, we did pay some for every month. The city of Ramon, one thousand, there at the end of the year.
Yes. Yes.
And so we're, we're, should be free both to pay on the city of Ramon, so that's good.
Any questions?
Questions?
Thank you.
Presser.
Uh, good morning, Judge and Commissioners. You have my report for the month of September twenty twenty-three in front of you. If you could just follow along with me, on the general fund, the total balance is at two million three hundred and fifteen thousand one eighty-eight with ten cents. Road and Bridge, the total ending balance is at two hundred and eighty-eight thousand three twenty-eight with three cents. The enterprise funds, the, the total ending balance is at one million one hundred and seventy thousand three ninety-eight seventy-four cents. The Drainage District, we have that ending balance at three million seven hundred and ninety-two thousand seven hundred and seventy-four with thirteen cents, which brings a grand total ending balance to seven million five hundred and sixty-six thousand six eighty-nine with no cents. That's my report.
Those everything is are catching the bank.
They're in the bank, sir.
How much is that, is, is, it's, it's available for the expenditure of accounting gain of a disaster?
I guess all of it, sir. I guess all of it. For a disaster, I believe so, yeah, but the judge will have to answer that question.
Yeah, and, and, and you know, just, for example, the, the Drainage District.
Yeah, I was just joking, man.
So if we had a disaster of, and, and, we'll see how we can use it, whether or not we can.
Just messing with you, I know. No, I get you. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. The report is in front of you, September report. I just want to advise everybody that the, the September amounts are just subject to change due to year-end accruals and prior month adjustments. Uh, any questions? Thank you, Judge.
And here, I'll just report that, I'm not sure you all have seen, Starr County has been in, in the media because of the border barrier that is being, uh, talked about being built. The border barrier supposedly is going to be built in segments throughout the river, from starting in Poughkeepsie all the way down to the Starr-Hidalgo County line. Uh, we don't know the exact locations yet, we got a map, the map is vague. Congress McQua, we had a meeting, Friday, a phone meeting, uh, and he gave us some information. However, there are still a lot of questions, uh, as to the barrier. Uh, we're told it's going to be a Jersey barrier, and what that means is, uh, I guess if you can picture the medians that are put in the, in the agri-medians, you know, the concrete median, uh, that are about three feet high, this will be something similar to that, of course, bigger. And then the, the barrier will go on top of that to the height of about fifteen feet. The, uh, they are movable, the, the way they explain, they'll have holes in the bottom for a piece of equipment, or a large, or a cliff, or something, and go in there and move them, move them around. So, we, we still don't have a lot of information, but we have been bombarded by the media, even trying to get information. But, uh, you know, as, as we get more information, we'll, we'll pass it on to you all. But it is going to affect pretty much all the Commissioners. Anyhow, that, that's, that's what I have on that.
Federal. Is it federal?
It's federal, yeah. And, and, yeah, that, that brings up a, a good point, Commissioner. Biden's administration had mentioned that not another foot of wall would be built, so we were under that impression. However, this was a law that was passed under President Trump, that this money has to be spent, so now uh, the President Biden and his administration are under law that it has to be done. So it's not something that he wants to or doesn't want to, it's something that the law requires him to do. So just to make sure that is understood.
Well, Your Honor, and it was playing a hole, because like you said, no, Congress changed his mind after, it's only forty years ago.
He didn't change it, it's that he ran out of time. The, the law says that it had to be spent by a certain period, and Congress never overwrote that, so the law now still exists, and he must follow the law. Uh, it's not that he changed his mind or anything, it's just that the law had him in a position that he had. That, that's how it's explained to me, or that's how I understand.
Well, if it's movable, I guarantee you, they will be playing for this on the other side, they will take. That's no problem, you know. I guarantee, as soon as it goes up, they got a big fork, they got a fork, they want to go wherever they want to.
I'm sure you all have heard some of my comments.
That's money down the drain.
Yeah, some of my comments to the media is that, that it's just money that's being thrown away because of a law that has to be done. But that's not going to stop anyone, you know, you have these segments all over the place, and then you have this movable wall that's just sitting on the ground. It doesn't have any.
I guarantee, they're going to dig right in.
They're going to dig right in, and come across, I mean.
They'll, they'll take it out.
But then again, it doesn't matter what we think. Anyhow, that's, that's what I have. Uh, if it's okay, I'll, I'll have to skip item nine until we come out of this discussion. Item ten is an action item, and this is to a preliminary approval for Tierra Santa, the states.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, it's in precinct three, Tierra Santa, phase five, and we're asking for preliminary.
And those who move, yeah, second.
Move the second to approve discussion. Oliver, please.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries, item eleven is also preliminary approval for Sandoval subdivision.
Yes, uh, Sandoval subdivision is in precinct four, and we're asking for preliminary to.
So move.
Check it.
Move the second for preliminary approval discussion. Oliver, please.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item twelve was an action item, it's approved with Presser's investment report.
Uh, yes, uh, Your Honor, I'd like to have the, in this report, approved.
Check it.
Move the second to approve discussion. Oliver, please. Oppose. Motion carries, I guess, uh, just for the total investment in CDs were three and a half billion.
That's correct, Your Honor.
And the overall interest earned in the fourth quarter was twenty-three thousand.
It's a big difference versus when we're getting thirty-four hundred, they're able to negotiate the, the interest rate.
And what rate are they renewing?
Four, I think, four, four point one.
It used to be less than one.
Yeah, and I think there, we have, we have three, three more coming up, so in, hopefully in January, we'll to renegotiate those also.
Did I call for a vote?
Yes, I did.
Thank you, Mr. Santos.
Yes.
Over. Uh, next item is also an action item, and this is to approve the investment policy, uh, for the county of San Sato.
Yes, we'd like to have this one approved also, Your Honor, I have to have it in place every, every fiscal year at the beginning, uh, by statute, I have to have it in place.
Is this the same as what we had before?
Is this the same as what we had before?
Yes.
I'll move you a second.
Move the second to approve, discussion. Oliver, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item is item fourteen, and this is an action item, and this is to approve the two twenty-nine district attorney's chapter fifty-nine corporate budget for twenty-two twenty-three.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Actually, that's a typo. That should be twenty-three, twenty-four. And we're just asking for approval of the budget that's been submitted.
I have motion, a second to approve, discussion. Oliver, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item fifteen is also an action item, is to approve the employment contract, we're making two twenty-nine district attorney and Selena Salinas, we paid, we're very fond of her.
That's correct, Your Honor. We're asking that that be approved. She's been helping train the new person that we are using for our grants. She's been invaluable to that training, and we're asking that contract be approved for six more months so that the person handling our grants can be fully trained.
I have a motion, a second to approve. This is for what period of time?
It's for six months, Judge.
For six months?
Yes.
Because, you know, I you know, I was under the understanding that she had been hired the first time, this is the third time.
This is the third time we've extended her contract. We actually had a person who was learning how to manage our grants. She left us, so we're training a new person.
Okay, Oliver, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
Thank you.
Carries. Thank you. Item sixteen is an action item, and this is to rename a street. Can I vote this for Mariachi Lane, is that right?
Yes, sir. It's always been Mariachi Lane. I don't know why.
You know, Your Honor, this is the second time this happened. Was that a street that's named on Google? Or let's take this example, Cali Cortez. No, we got GPS guides, FedEx guides, and they run it, Sale Cali Cortez. So that person or those people that live on that street are not gonna get their mail due to this issue. This is the second time you asked them.
So it's always been.
We need to upgrade or check all our streets so that they can be current, so that none of our constituents lose any mail that there's going to be. There are streets that are having problems with it.
We have the same issue in the.
You're changing.
But but this is on on Google?
See, lo que pasa, they have a Google map, they they put that Mariachi Lane, Mariachi Lane doesn't come up. You got a you FedEx guy, no conocen la área, they don't know where Mariachi Lane is.
But I guess what we need to do is just Google to change the name.
Because we're, you know, we're changing it. We're gonna have to change it.
Yeah, but we might change it here. Google doesn't change.
No, but once we change it, ya sale in Google on Mariachi Lane.
So so but I thought it was Mariachi Lane already.
It's been out there, yeah.
So why doesn't Google pick it up, you know, if it's been?
Porque Sale Cali Cortez, and I don't know. I don't know what was named Cali Cortez. The same issue has to be. The problem is when they, these people came with the nine-one-one, they they called names all over the place, with with not even consulting with anybody. That's the problem that they have. And we gotta pass them through here so that they can get changed within a hundred minutes.
A motion.
A motion, a second. Oliver, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item seventeen also an action item, and this is to approve right-of-way permit for real water supply.
We have the paperwork in order. Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Second.
Move the second to approve, discussion. Oliver, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item eighteen is an action item, is to open a new account for the Texas State National Forest Service, Mr. Perez.
Uh, motion to approve, Your Honor, for the grants that the Fire Department's gonna receive.
I have a motion, a second to approve, discussion. Oliver, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item twenty is a action item, and this is to approve a request to amend, well, just remandment, from items twenty to.
Nineteen.
Nineteen. From nineteen. Is thirty-two our budget amendment, sir?
Move the two.
Second.
Move the second to approve, discussion. Oliver, please, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item thirty-three is also an action item, and this is to request a budget correction.
Something urgent.
And a motion, a second. Second, Oliver, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. And it is now ten forty, and we're showing the section, I find, one oh seven four. We'll go into executive session to discuss order of salaries and ASO. It will be forty-five, and we're back in open session. If I may, I'll go back to item number nine. It is a action item. Minister Patrick with the public service, uh, practice issues.